Begin our August 10th meeting at this time, the council called itself order. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Senior Pastor John Kapaktrik of Rio Booth Church in Monroe deliver an invitation, if you would please, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've blessed us with. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace. And we thank you for an opportunity to come together as a city for the betterment of our today and our tomorrow. Lord, you told us in your word that the greatest amongst them are servants. And so, we thank you for our city council. We thank you for our mayor, all of our elected officials who have been elected to serve. And Lord, we as a city, we have been called to support and to help make things better along with them. So, Lord, bless during this day, bless during this meeting. Allow us to be unified. Allow us to walk in peace because in your scripture, it lets us also know that where there is unity, you command blessings. And we as a city, we need your blessings. We thank you. We appreciate you. And we thank you in advance. In your name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Pastor Kapaktrik, thank you so much for delivering that. Very good. Item one on the agenda, we need to go to A and B. A motion to award a service title. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a pass. Item B, motion to adopt resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution's been passed. At this time, I'll recognize retired employee Christopher Ham. This time, I'll recognize Chief Gill.
Stand over here. Captain Ham was retired with us from us a few weeks ago after 25 years of city and 30 years of law enforcement. Generations of law enforcement has been his family. Captain Ham and his family have been associated to work with the city of Monroe for almost 51 years. And as fate would have it, his number and his dad's number was 450. And today, I just found out that the address to the new police station is going to be 450 West Crow Street. I had nothing to do with that. I wish I could take credit for it, Chris, but you know, we appreciate you. You're more than welcome to come back. We could use you. But I think you're enjoying retirement. So, Mayor, think you got something you'd like to come read for him?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to read the resolution from the Monroe City Council honoring retired employee Christopher Michael Ham. Whereas on his citation of his retirement on August 1st, 2021, the city council wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Christopher Michael Ham for his loyal and dedicated service to the city of Monroe Police Department. Whereas he diligently served the city as police officer, detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. And whereas for 27 years, Christopher has focused on safety and protection of the residents of the city of Monroe. Whereas Christopher has faithfully and loyally discharged his duties and has represented the Monroe Police Department and the city of Monroe with honor, integrity, and the utmost professionalism. Whereas the city of Monroe is most grateful for the specialized and personal contribution and sacrifices Christopher has made to the city of Monroe. Whereas the city council of the city of Monroe wishes to acknowledge and express its appreciation to him for the years of distinguished service to the residents of Monroe, noting that Christopher Michael Ham will be missed both professionally and as friends. Now therefore, it be resolved, I Bobby Kilgore, in virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Monroe, who hereby proclaim Christopher Michael Ham a vital part of the city of Monroe community and encourage all citizens to express appreciation and support for his accomplishment. It further resolved that the resolution be entered upon the permanent minutes of the city council. The witness here, I'm here, set my hand, he calls his seal of the city of Monroe, will be affixed as 10th day of August 2021. Thank you so much for your service, Christopher. And to the family, thank you for sharing Chris with the city of Monroe. It's certainly made a difference in law enforcement. It's my pleasure to work with it for several years, and my pleasure to see you now and being able to retire. But good luck to you, best to you, and wish you the well. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, working for the city of Monroe is different than just any place else. It's a special family. And it starts at the very bottom and goes to the very top. And I was blessed over almost 28 years to experience that with the city. I've had a city council that has supported us as city employees and police departments for a long period of time. I can't tell you what that means to me, to my family, and this agency. Thank you for your continued leadership for our city. And I'll continue to pray for you guys. I'll always be an advocate for the city of Monroe. It's the best place to live and the best place to work, in my opinion. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Captain Kapaktrik.
Congratulations, Captain.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations, brother.
Congratulations.
Good luck. And you looking for something to do? We got you.
Yes, sir. Your leadership is absolutely great. Thanks for everything.
Now, I'd like to take just a moment, if you don't mind, and read a little something for our city attorney, Majeeb Shikan. I want to take a moment to recognize our city attorney, Majeeb Shikan. This past weekend, he completed his term as president of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorney's and affiliate of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorneys Act is a liaison between municipal attorneys and other North Carolina municipalities. Majeeb helped lead the association during the pandemic, keeping its 550-plus members informed of developments within the North Carolina municipality legal community. The association just completed its first in-person meeting in two years. Majeeb now becomes the immediate past president of the organization, continuing his leadership role with the organization. Majeeb is also finishing his second year as chair of the Board of Trustees of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, Risk Management Services Board of Trustees. This is a group that provides liability, property insurance, worker compensation, health insurance to many of our local government. In fact, Monroe gets its property and casualty insurance from Risk Management Services. Majeeb will finish his work at the end of the year with Risk Management Services. It's always good to have someone who is well-respected statewide as our city attorneys. Majeeb, thank you for all you do across the state. Well, thank you for all you do for the city of Monroe. You've done a great job. Of those folks I've talked with many times, they'll give you, they'll give you. It's good to be, it's good to be recognized when you go across our state. So, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Mayor. It's all for God.
At this time, I recognize Brian Borner, read the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear? Otherwise, I'll kind of lower this. Okay. The city council uses a consent agenda to consider items that are non-controversial and written. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and the vote of council. The consent agenda contains the following items. Item number three, alcoholic beverage control board travel policy. This is to adopt and approve a travel policy that conforms to the city of Monroe travel policy, the appointing authority, and have policy approved annually. Item number four is an annexation request. It's a request to call a public hearing for an annexation of 80.518 acres located along Weddington Highway and North Rocky River Road in order to develop a mixed-use development with a mixture of housing types and commercial uses to be held on September 14th, 2021. Item five is the annual settlement of tax collector for 2020 taxes. This is to approve the annual settlement of the tax collector for 2020. The settlement shows that the collection rate, that the collection rate is 99.33%. Item number six, call for, this is a call for public hearings to be held on September 14th, 2021. Item A is a request to call for a public hearing to consider the sale of 80-plus acres of land to a confidential company known as Project Millwork. Item B is a request to call for a public hearing for the consideration of Magnet 100 Economic Development Incentive for Project Endurance. Item C is a request to call for a public hearing to consider a zoning map amendment to rezone properties located within the city limits of Monroe and a text amendment to amend Code of Ordinances Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 157, to establish the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of the zoning map and text amendment is to implement the relevant goals and objectives of Forward Monroe Land Use and Transportation Plan and develop a clear and user-friendly UDO that is consistent with city plans and policies. Item D, request to call for a public hearing to consider a zoning map amendment to rezone the property located at 1107 Parker Street from residential multifamily to residential high density. Item E is a request to call for a public hearing to consider a zoning map amendment for properties located along West Highway 74 from general business to conditional district exchange apartments, a 242-unit multifamily apartment complex. Again, these are all public hearings that will be held on September 14th. Item seven, minutes and reports. A is dispersment of fiscal year 21, 22 city council discretionary funds. We have two dispersments, one for council member Angelia James of $10 to the Union County Chamber, and the second near Bobby Kilgore of $500 to Common Hearts. B is exemplary customer service award program. City council is requested to review, and this is for informational purposes, the exemplary service employee award program. Item C, financial reports for June 2021. As of June 30th, 2021, the unassigned general fund balance is $6,368,737. Assigned fund balance is $3,30395. D and E are minutes. F is a summary of contracts, change orders, approved, and the city manager's settlement of claims for July 2021 totaling $1,227,189.24. Item eight, this is an ordinance to amend our code of ordinances. This is to reduce the speed limit on Foxmore Drive, Knights Court, and Round Table Road. The item was presented to Public Safety Committee on July 19th and recommended for approval. Item nine, Parks and Recreation Leaf Collection Truck. This is to approve the award of the leaf collection truck to Old Dominion Brush Company in the amount of $200,039. The truck was bought through Source Well Cooperative Purchasing Program and also requests the authorization of the manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Item 10, Stewart Creek Sewer Service Basin and Pump Station Force Main Upgrades. This item is to approve the engineering services contract with W.K. Dixon and Company to complete permitting and design of sewer pump station force main upgrades in the Stewart Creek Sewer Service Basin. Tax releases, item number 11, tax releases for June 2021, to approve tax releases for June in the amount of $9,128.35. Item 12, temporary access and parking easement for 694 West Crow. This is to approve a temporary access and parking easement, authorize the manager to execute any and all documents as required to provide Rand M. LLC Classic Molders privileges over the property for purposes of ingress, egress, and parking. Water Resources Contracted Laboratory Services. This is to award Laboratory Services contract to Pace Analytical in the amount not to exceed $59,646 in the first year of the contract, plus a 5% contingency, and not to exceed $65,000 per year in subsequent annual renewals for analysis of water quality and treatment plant residual parameters to maintain the strict regulatory compliance requirements. And those are, that concludes the items for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I second.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Sound like any opposed? I'll go back to item two, public comment period. The first one I have signed, Ms. Julia Thompson, to recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak very briefly with you. My name is Julie Thompson. I live at 3503 Romany Drive in Monroe. And I'll go ahead and tell you how old I am. I'm 59.
You're young.
Yeah, I know it. I'm gonna count on that and hope it'll stay that way. But I've lived here all of my life, and it has been my privilege here of late to declare my candidacy for the council seat this fall. And so, I wanted to take the time to come to the council meeting tonight and introduce myself. I've had the privilege of speaking with some of you. I've known some of you all of my life, either from afar or maybe a little closer up, depending on how our paths have crossed. But I do appreciate the opportunity to run for the council seat. It's not something that I take lightly. It's something that has been born of a period of prayer and great consideration. I think these are amazing, exciting times to be alive, and they're also very challenging. And I do believe that stewarding our past is very important. I have a lot of wonderful memories of being in this community and have lived in the Union County Monroe area all of my life. Went to Sun Valley High School, lived in the city of Monroe for many, many years. My grandparents were lifelong members of the community here. And so, again, the past is a wonderful thing, and we have to store it and learn from it and also appreciate all the lessons that it's taught us. But then steering the future is also very important, and I'd like to be a part of that. So, I want to thank each of you for serving. I know Mayor Kilgore is retiring, and I do appreciate his service. I appreciate all of you. And I thank you for all that you do for Monroe, and I look forward to meeting you more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, L-E-Y-B-A, Michael. Recognize you at this time, sir.
My name is Michael Leva. I'm at 811 GW Broom Road, and we're out here in Monroe. Just got a quick question to the council about item number 30, I believe it was item number 30, 20, sorry, of the last meeting. I believe Ms. James put it best that there seems to be politics before the people of Monroe going on. And what I mean by that is, very simply, is that the Citizens Appointment Committee had a person that was eligible, qualified, and ready to be voted on, and was delayed for somebody else to be found, and now it's not even on this agenda for this month. I am very passionate about this. I have family members that are police officers, police officers, and I take this very seriously. I think that the council needs to actually reconsider this. And that one person that was on there was Bob Kanacheck. You had one person, and with the exception of Ms. James, everybody voted to delay it. Seeing that there was a young lady that was just killed in a recent drive-by, that is unacceptable and must be addressed. Bob is more than qualified. I have just met the man recently. I have multiple friends in CMPD. I have family members, like I said, that are police officers. One's a federal police officer that's retired, is my brother. These men in blue do an excellent job. They bust their hump every day and get very little recognition. They need somebody like Bob on that council seat. I submit it back to you all and your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anyone else to recognize individual sign up to speak, and there was no written comment submitted. And this, we will go to the regular agenda at this time. Public hearing, item 14.
Mayor, I make a motion to table this to September 14th by request of the, of the...
Okay. I have a motion to request, do I have a motion? I have a motion, I have a second.
Second, sir.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will pass. Go to item 15.
Actually, Mayor, before you go to 15, it might be appropriate because I believe item 17, council received an email saying that one was being requested to table. It might be appropriate to go ahead and deal with that right now. Is that correct, Ms. Menler?
No. We'll go to 17 then.
Yes, the applicant did request to table that item to the September 14th meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion to table and second.
Second.
All in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, there's a question from the mayor brought down.
Could we amend that to include with no additional advertising?
That would be correct. It would be, would the maker of the motion agree to amend that to include no further advertising?
Yes.
And would the seconder agree?
Second, yes.
Okay. I'll let the mayor do that.
Okay. That is passed with that correction. We'll go back to item 15.
Mayor, you just may want to let anyone here who is here on the Willoughby Park one, that will now be considered in September instead of this year. But if they're here for it, then, I don't know if you've got anyone signed up for it right there, Mayor, as item 17?
No, I haven't.
Even better, there's no one signed up for it, Mayor.
All right. We've got 15 now. Go to item 15. Zoning map on item 15, request rezone property located along North Charlotte Avenue from residential low district to general business. We recognize you.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Mendler with the Planning Department. Tonight, I'm here to present a zoning map amendment regarding the property located at 1821 North Charlotte Avenue. To orient you to the site, the properties are highlighted in blue. They're located south of North Charlotte Avenue, near the intersection of Dickerson Boulevard and North Charlotte Avenue. In the corner, upper left corner, that is the Dickerson Boulevard intersection and the Old Bylow, which is here just to the north as well, and then the railroad track to the south. The applicant is requesting the general rezone of the subject's properties from R-20 Single Family Residential to General Business, and the properties are currently vacant. The future land use plan indicates this area as the community corridor. This area generally covers most of US 74 and areas adjacent to intersecting major streets. These areas serve as a primary conduit to downtown, the epicenter of the city's commercial activity, and the spine of the community with critical connections to major employers and activity centers. Single-family residential is not a priority use in this designation while commercial uses are a priority use. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use plan, and staff believes the use is reasonable and in the public interest because of the neighboring general business in the area and consistency with the future land use plan. Rezoning notification signs were posted 10 days prior to the public hearing, and an official rezoning notification letter was sent, again, 10 days prior to the public hearing. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, and Planning Board also recommended approval of the rezoning. I'll be happy answering your questions.
Let me ask you, how many letters were sent?
About 16.
Did you get any replies?
Not specifically for the letters. And actually, now I think about it, I don't think I received any phone calls on this rezoning.
Okay.
I don't recall.
So, there's no objection from neighbors?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make the motion, we adopt the resolution approving the land.
It's a public hearing.
No, there was no written comment submitted to us. If there's a public hearing, anyone here who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and take action.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the land development plan.
I'm thinking.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item B, pass.
Motion to adopt ordinance amendment code section 156.106.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seat will pass.
Motion to adopt ordinance amendment code section 156.98.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will pass. Item 16.
Mayor?
Ready for Doug?
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was waiting.
I was waiting on you. You'd want to know, but yes, come right ahead if you will, please.
Okay. Good evening, Doug Britt in the Planning Department. And tonight, I'm presenting a zoning text and map amendment request. The applicant's requesting to conditional district in order to develop a 2,700 square feet restaurant along Highway 74. The orientation of the site, the mall portion that they want to do is the All-One Parcel located along West Roosevelt, Dickerson Boulevard, and obviously backs up to the rear along Commerce The subject property is part of an old conditional district, part of the mall, and the adjacent properties across the street are GB. To the west would be GB as well, and then to the rear is a combination of GB and residential multifamily. And then to the east, a combination of GB as well. The applicant's requesting the, my type is a little good, apologize. But the applicant's requesting to develop a restaurant that would be, wouldn't have access on Highway 74. It would be accessed off the main drive that's in between, adjacent to the bank. I'll go back to this right here. So, the restaurant's location is going to be right here, and you would turn in to right here as you would any other time to get to the mall, or you can come from the other side. The proposed restaurant is 2,700 square feet. It meets all the parking and landscaping requirements. That is depicted on the site plan. This is the elevation of the restaurant, is a combination of ephes, stone, and hardy plank siding. Another side. The land use plan calls this area to be a neighborhood center, which is for commercial and high-density residential. So, it is consistent with the land development plan. 37 properties were notified of the request, as well as the property was posted. Staff is not receiving any calls or concerns regarding the request. Planning Board and staff do recommend approval of the project, and I'll be glad to answer your questions if you're having it this time as well.
Any questions?
No.
Hearing none, thank you, sir. This is a public... This is a public hearing. Have been no written comments were submitted, and it is a public hearing. If anyone here who would like to speak in favor? If you will give us, it was your name and address for the record, please.
I'll be brief. Mr. Mayor, councilmember staff, thank you. Todd Ware, nine nine zero four Flowerbonnet Avenue in Concord, I did sign in. I'm legal counsel for the applicant, Monroe Crossing. Have nothing substantive to add. No other team members were able to make it, and we didn't want to not show up, and so I'm here. I just want to commend staff. I have not worked directly on this, but everybody on the team has said it's been a joyful process with staff, and we just, thanks for the consideration, and I'm happy to help with any questions if anything were to come up.
I have one. What type of, what type of restaurant would this be?
Well, it's not one hundred percent, and of course, the rezoning is for the use as opposed to the user, but it's looking to be a burger-type restaurant. You know, I can't commit as to the end tenant, but I think a habit burger has been mentioned, and those discussions are growing, going real well, so that's about it.
But it would provide some employee opportunities?
Sure.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who else would like to speak? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and take action.
Motion to adopt resolution approving land development plan compliance.
Second. I have a motion, a second on B. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B will pass, item C.
Motion to adopt ordinance amended code section one five six point one oh six.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, C will pass, item D.
Motion to adopt ordinance amended code section one five six point nine eight.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, D will pass. Okay. Item eighteen, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, permit renewal. Engineers, Ms. Sarah McHale. Ms. Sarah?
That'd be Chris.
Chris gonna take it, okay.
Sorry if I take this off? Okay, y'all just want to make sure. Good evening, I'm Chris Costner, I'm in the Engineering Department, I'm a stormwater engineer for the city of Monroe. We've come to present our MPDS permit, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is under the Clean Water Act, which what we're required to have. Outline the presentation is, of course, what's in the permit, what we're required to do, we're due to renew our permit, and upcoming audit. Our permit, there are six minimum measures we're required to do: public education, outreach, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff, post-construction site runoff, and what we do as a city, our municipalities, our facilities. Public education and outreach. We go around to the schools and talk to the kids about stormwater pollution, educating what's the causes, what can we do? So we're, that in the sixth and fifth grade, they focus on surface water, so we go around to those schools. And we use what's called fire state, is a two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half model of a community. We show what caused, you know, the causes of impacts, our rivers and our streams, and what we do to clean it up. We also use a PowerPoint presentation, pictures of some things that are actually happening within the city. We also go to public events. We've got heritage, it used to be Earth Day, neighborhood meetings, we can get, you know, we can get a homeowners association, we'll go talk to them about pollution in their area and within the city. Waterworks, at any event we can get out, we go to, we've gone some to park and rec. Well, as part of too, we have promotional items that we give out. Some of y'all might have seen our fish pens, duck pens, flamingos. We try to, you know, put information about stormwater, a hotline, promoting all this so people can be aware. We got magnets put on people's refrigerators. We also do bill inserts twice a year. Now, we've been, about past year, we've been using social media, putting the word out. Run twice a year for about a month, once every week. Just something short and sweet, just get the message out there. Hey, we're, you know, pollution's affecting our streams. But while we're doing all this, we also got to document it. Public involvement, getting the citizens of Monroe involved with this, not just, not the government, us, but also get the citizens. We have two programs, Adopt a Stream and Storm Drain Markers. The Storm Drain Markers, try and get the citizens to put these little markers out on this, our catch basin. May have seen some, there's some old metal ones out there, we're replacing those because they get worn out. We advertise this for people who are looking for like civic time. They got students, they got time they gotta make, need. We give them the kit, safety material, an area to go market, and then they go market. We also have another program called the water quality, so a little kit, the kit, we take them to a stream, they take a water sample, and they look at the pH, turbidity, dissolved oxygen, and see where's it fit, is it within criteria? And if they want to, we can submit it to a national organization for their records. And we also promote the hotline again, and, again, documentation. Illicit discharge under stormwater management ordinance. We obtained effective in October two thousand and seven, we use the state model ordinance. Anybody that reports illicit discharge, we go out and inspect. Illicit discharge could be anything from spills, litter, dumping, just about anything that is not stormwater-related, or not, that could affect our streams. And then, we, if we, we try to work with the owner or the property or tenant to get the issue resolved. It's like we've seen here recently, grease bins. The employees, you know, they spill it on the ground. So, you know, first we try to educate them, try to get them to change. If they don't want to, then we go into still citations. Fortunately, everybody wants to work with us, and we want to work with them. We don't want to do still citations. And then we also have had an inventory of our systems. Where are our pipes? Where are our catch basins and drainage structures? Where are these stormwater control measures that you're seeing on these new developments? And we're also required to walk our streams and look at the outfalls. If there's a flow, we check. Is there something in there that's not supposed to, you know, discoloration, suds on top of it? If there is, then we have to investigate. We're required by our permit to only do twenty percent of the city, but because we got actually three big watersheds, we're actually doing one watershed a year, and we're having a consultant actually help us do that. So we've walked Bear Skin, they're wrapping up Stewart's Creek, and we work on contracts for Richardson. Once we get those done, we're gonna start again, we're just gonna have watershed done every year. And then we also have educational materials, like I said, when grease bins, educating the employees. Then, there's that word, documentation. Construction runoff, we are delegated from the state, control the sediment coming off the site. We do plan reviews, and also as part of the plan reviews, you know, once we approve it, then they have to, the developer has to get a permit from the state for construction. And then we do site inspections. If we see any issues, then we follow up with the owner. And if the public sees anything, they can call the city, the engineering department, or trucks driving mud onto the road, they can actually call what's called stop mud. Documentation again, all our site inspections and reviews. Post-construction, even though you build it, now we got to control the volume and the water quality. We're required, anything over, for new development, anything over a half-acre disturbance, or redevelop, anything, that you add any purged surface on this property, they're gonna have to control it. That's why you start to see all these what they call, it used to be BMPs, now it's stormwater control SEMs. We use DEQ's design manual as a guideline. Once they do it, then they're required to maintain it, and then as part of that, they also had to send us, send us an annual report yearly. And then we go behind inspectors, so they hire a third-party inspector, and we go behind the inspector to check, and we're finding out the inspectors are missing things. And as part of it, we also, you know, we give them a notice, hey, your annual report's due, give them three months' notice. It's not in on time, then we start sending other letters, and then if they don't get in in a certain amount of time, then we issue a notice of violation, but we try everything we can before we get to a notice of violation. If we got an industry that didn't, we're having trouble with, like getting a report, we call Economic Development and ask them to help us. And they've been great to work with, they get the issue resolved real quick for us, and documentation again. What are we doing as a city? We actually go around to our city facilities. We broke them up into two categories, major and minor. The major ones are the ones that we see as major possible contributors to pollution, operations centers, street division, energy service, parking wrecks, maintenance facilities, cities like that. Then we got minor sites, parking lot, pump stations, we go around, and we look and see what's going on. We see what they're doing, make sure they're in compliance, what we're doing, can we reduce it? And we grade them, and if they score good, get an A, they get the Blue Raindrop Award. We're, we're the only city that actually has this Blue Drop Award in the state of North Carolina. And we've been, we're looking at maybe during a presentation at our conference down the road, documentation of all this. You notice everything's documentation, documentation. Our permit, our permit is a five-year permit, we're actually in our third permit cycle. First one was issued in two thousand and five. Our current one was issued in two thousand and seventeen, or twenty seventeen, February, getting ready to expire next year. So that's why I'm in here to talk about too, is renewing our permit. It has to be submitted to the state six months prior, so our permits, renewal applications due this month to the state. And where actually be, when we renew with our permit, we'll be using the state's new stormwater management template. Back in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, EPA came into the state and audited five communities just to check up on DEQ, because DEQ wasn't actually auditing all the communities, they've been sporadic throughout the year. So now DEQ's going around and auditing everybody, it's on a five-year cycle. And they're looking at what's called the MS fours, which is municipalities, stormwater, sewer, separate stormwater, separate stormwater sewer system. The audit can be from one to three days, and we got guidance on getting ready for it. As of right now, as of June, the state has audited fifty-seven communities. About seventy-five percent of them have got what they call notice of violation, they have not done anything. Indian Trail got audited last year, and they've been given a notice of violation. There are three results on the audit: notice of compliance, notice of deficiency, notice of violation. We're seeing a lot of, the ones that are getting those violations, they're not doing anything. Now they're under a mandate to actually do something. And some of them are actually going to enforcement. Like I say, the state is just trying to get everybody in compliance this first go-around. They're looking at finds of, how much profit did that community make from not being in Some of the results of the, what we're seeing, mostly documentation, not doing anything, not recording, no standard operating procedures, not promoting the program for their hotlines. What are we doing as the city? Stormwater staff has been meeting here lately, getting ready, talking about each of the measures, going over everything. We're reviewing and updating our standard operating procedure. Do we have enough? What, you know, do we need to add more? We're actually having a consultant come in and audit our own program. And then we're actually internally looking at too, at the program. Make sure, we're reviewing all our documents, make sure we got everything, we've gone through the cities, they got a notice of compliance and seen what they did. We call this the purple notebook, it's about three-inch binder, this is the summary of all the documentation. And we're reviewing what other communities have done in the past few years, what did they miss? And then we're gonna use GIS to, you know, have a map showing the state, this is all our database. And then I'm here tonight to, you know, getting council's approval, support for the program.
And Chris, did these audits, are they announced audits, or they're just like pop-up audits?
They're announced, we'll actually get a thirty-day notice.
Okay.
They'll send a letter to either city manager or the mayor.
It seems like we're ready, though.
We're getting there, we're working on it. We're think, we feel comfortable. We're not going to get the notice of violation. We've been meeting on, like I said, a couple of measures, and just little things we're working on, so. We don't know when, like I said, we get thirty-day notice, and then we have seven days to submit all the information they requested.
How many people does it take to keep up the notebook and do all the documentations?
We have one person that's full-time, that's, that's her, her job, she is the stormwater compliance coordinator. That's, that's her notebook. Of course, she likes purple, so that's why it's purple. But it's, she's, she's actually preparing our annual report right now, so she's making sure we got all SOPs, if they're not due, she's letting me know. And she's, she's already done the audit, internal audit, and I'm reviewing it right now, see what she's found.
That's impressive. I make a motion to authorize the staff to submit the application.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Does that also include our stormwater management plan? We have to submit those two with our.
To include the maintenance plan as well.
Okay, I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will pass. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Outside nineteen, number nineteen, outside city customer service water request, White Store Road, I recognize, Mr. Ruff.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Russell Colthard, Water Resource Director. For your consideration, this evening is an outside city water service request for two zero zero three White Store Road. The drinking water well that had been serving this property has failed, and so the tenant has asked for city water. Our water is adjacent to the property, so we are able to serve. The Union County Board of Commissioners did approve this request at their July nineteenth meeting, and this is coming to you without a committee recommendation due to the timing and urgency, and that was approved by Public Enterprise Committee Chair, Councilmember McGee. And the recommendation is in your staff report, and with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Russ, what is the cost to the customer to have that, to be connected to the city water system?
So, some, a couple of years back, we standardized it, the capacity fee, which is the largest cost, would be the same for outside and inside. I don't have those numbers here, but it's roughly twenty-five hundred dollars. Then the actual tap fee, which is the crew going out and running the copper and the meter and all that, is double for outside customers, so it would be double the cost that's in our fee schedule.
And then that person becomes one of our utility customers?
Yes, they'd be paying a monthly bill, and they do pay, it's noted in the staff report, they do pay a double customer base charge per month, but their usage charge is just based on, same, same that city residents would pay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
May I make a motion to approve the request?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will pass. Thank you, Russ. Appreciate that, sir. Item twenty, sidewalk waiver request for twenty-eight oh six West Roosevelt Boulevard, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, this is a request we received from Kevin Pullis with the TAR Group for, to waive an eight-foot sidewalk requirement for the proposed development, and this is a site at front seventy-four and Windmere Drive. In two thousand and eighteen, when the city agreed to participate in the pedestrian enhancements with the US seventy-four widening project, we updated the detail manual to require an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of seventy-four and a ten-foot wide multi-use path on the south side. That project will extend from Seacrest Shortcut to Rocky River Road with those pedestrian enhancements extending to Fowler-Seacrest. Some of the reasons for their request, they're citing a lack of curb and dutter drainage, existing sidewalk in the area, and the bulb out that will be a part of the US seventy-four widening project. Staff has estimated that the installation of the sidewalk would cost less Staff has estimated that the installation of the sidewalk would cost less than $25,000, and it's about 400 linear feet of sidewalk. The, what we have done is recommended that they coordinate with MCDOT so that they don't have to remove the sidewalk when the project comes through. Any existing sidewalk, when the project comes through, DOT will replace as part of their project, and then we participate in new sidewalk installation as part of that project for the pedestrian enhancements. This is coming to you directly because the July PEC was canceled, and the chair did recommend that we move it forward tonight. We are recommending that they do install the sidewalk. And I believe Dusty Wiederhold, the developer, and Sarah Hanby might be here tonight.
Are there any, is all those businesses through there got sidewalks?
No, sir.
Well, I was lucky today that I didn't see any, I was gonna say if there's something I haven't seen.
There are sporadic, a few, a handful of them.
Well, why would we, why would, without not being argumentative, why would we put it there and nobody else had got it?
Well, the intent is for the developers to share in the costs of these pedestrian enhancements, and as infield development comes along, if there's gaps, small gaps, the city would connect it. That's the intent of the policy.
Well, if you put it in front of that business, going west, and I'm not sure where the next sidewalk is, but I'm, I'm not, there's not any sidewalk for a long ways, if any at all, are there?
I don't believe so.
And if you're going east, there not any?
There's pieces here and there, the new coffee shop on 74 near Hathaway's, I can't think of the name, else, I don't know.
Scooters.
Scooters, yeah, they have sidewalks.
Where?
Scooters. The American Deli installed a bit, a sidewalk.
Those sidewalks connect in 3,000 years. And I, again, I don't mean to be, I'm just trying to find out who's got it and who don't have it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my question. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, I'm still not sure exactly where this location is, would you mind going over that one more time?
Sure. This is 74 right here, this is Windmere, this is where Mo's and Starbucks is located. Over here is a gas station and then Roland Hills Drive, targets across the street.
There's a house there, a big house there, been empty for some time now, and they sold it for this project.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, it's, it's in the corner, what does that develop, you turn right and go in?
Windmere Drive.
Yes, in the corner of Windmere Drive, that brick house.
There are no sidewalks.
No, there don't.
The only sidewalk between Secret Shortcut, which you mentioned, is the widening part and Rocky River, if I'm not mistaken, is in front of Logan's Restaurant. That's the only one on that side of the street.
Well, that's what I kind of remember, but I, I wasn't here, that's why I was asking, I wasn't here, but I didn't, I looked today and I, I didn't see anybody. Anyway, Council have any other?
I got something. Sir, did you mention that MCDOT, they're gonna come in and widen, do a widening project? Are they gonna install sidewalks during that project or no?
Yes, so we, Council agreed in 2018 for us to participate in those pedestrian enhancements. So a sidewalk is there, they'll replace it as part of their project, but if it's not there, then we're participating in the cost of that installation.
And when is that supposed to happen, do you know?
I believe it's been delayed to at least 2024 was the last I looked.
Okay.
Which is still subject to their budgeting and funding availability.
Okay, any other question?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the waiver request for 2806 West Roosevelt Boulevard.
I have a motion to approve the waiver request, I'll have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's none, that is waived. I believe the developer was here, did you want to speak, sir? If you'll come to the podium, please. If you speak, we'd like to have your name and address for our record, please.
My name is Dusty Wiederhold, 36 Salty Tide Cove, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. We are under contract to purchase this property from Sarah Hanby. We have, we're planning approximately 14,000 square feet, of which 89% is currently under contract, under lease or either LOI. The, we've had numerous, numerous discussions with DOT about the proposed widening of Highway 74. We've been told that at that time, DOT and their current plans is planning to put in a sidewalk as part of the improvement project. That hasn't been confirmed because I think the project is on hold until probably '27, I believe. The project consists of approximately 2.85 acres, it has 387 square, linear feet of frontage, and to our knowledge, there are no sidewalks in any of the residential developments around there or any of the commercial developments. It's really a sidewalk going from nowhere to nowhere. Our civil engineer has made a comment to staff that without the proper sidewalks, I mean, without the proper curb and gutter and drainage, a sidewalk without curb and gutter would be dangerous. Because there's really no way for a car to stop if someone runs off the road and, and there's pedestrian on, on the sidewalk. I think it's a dangerous situation, and we respectfully request to have that sidewalk.
You already got it.
You already approved it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I thought he realized.
I mean, unless you'd like council to reconsider it, say no.
Item 21, process to recruit permanent city manager. Mayor to recognize city attorney, Mr. Khan, human resource director, Deborah Reed, who go handle it? Ms. Reed, we'll recognize you this time.
Good afternoon.
Mayor.
City Council.
Good afternoon.
I was speaking with the mayor, and we thought this was a good time to bring to your attention some options and choices that you would have in terms of recruitment for the city manager. Currently, you have an interim city manager, and you can make a choice of letting that go for a period of time, or you can run parallel with a recruiting firm to allow for them to do a national search and do assessments to find out how best the qualifications fit. But at the same time, your interim is also eligible to be able to apply. So, if you're gonna go with a national search and use a consultant, that process takes about six months or more because of the assessment, because of the background check, and also the person has to give some type of notice to the current employer. So as you think through how you want to go through the process, those are some of the options that you have.
You said one of the options is get, get a national recruiter?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the other option?
Leave your interim in place for whatever period of time that you need, or you can run it parallel, do your recruit, and your interim also has the ability to apply at the same time that you're looking nationally for someone.
I like the parallel option.
Yeah.
Say that one more time.
The parallel option allows the interim to lead and while we still look for one nationally.
Okay. And what we normally will do is do a bid for at least three. The last group that we used was developmental associates, and we had some others years ago, but we would run a bid just to see what the dollars look like and what kind of plan they have to offer.
We have the ability to make, if we know of national firms, to make a suggestion?
I couldn't hear you.
We have the ability to make suggestions of firms that do national searches?
What we'll do is find out the different firms, and we can bring it back to, to council for you to have a look, or if you want to do a, have a presentation before you.
I like the parallel.
Typically, what you would do is there would be an RFP process.
Right, and I can mention that.
And that's, I think that's just to clarify that for the council, is that, and then that's, those proposals are what would come back, so.
Right.
If, if at the time the RFPs are ready to go out, if you have a suggestion as to who should receive it in addition to however the HR department is sending it out, that would be the appropriate time.
And then we will narrow it down, like if we get something that just doesn't match before we bring the best consultants to you.
I, I like the parallel option.
Excuse me, you're saying this would be probably in February?
I didn't use a date, I just said that it takes.
Six months.
Over, yeah, it takes six months or more depending on what time period a person has to let their current employer know.
Well, that's a good idea because that would give us time to, to work with our interim city manager right now, and, and also we've got elections coming up, so.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, something.
I move that we adopt the parallel option.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none? That will pass, all right. Item 22, we'll go, go into closed session.
I move to go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General's statute section 143-318.11A3 to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the city's attorneys and to discuss the cases of Stephen M. Moore versus City of Monroe.